All right, Madam Chairman, we are live.
Welcome to our afternoon session of our special session on September 11th. Next up is a workshop with our directors and elected officials on moving to the Cascade Annex to discuss what we need to do and steps to take, procedural matters. Go ahead and for our clerk or treasurer before it wants to discuss a couple of things. If you want to start, then that's great. Go on up.
I'm here to participate in the discussion for some of the procedural matters that will happen once we move to the Ameritidal Building. Maybe I'll just come sit at the table and we can talk about all of them as a group.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, if you want to begin with this, one of the thoughts was the mail collection. The thought process was is to still remain in place the existing procedure in which all of the mail is picked up and then delivered to the courthouse here. And then our office would be willing to at least do the, or courthouse security would still be doing the distribution into the specific departments' boxes. And then the departments would be coming here to pick up their mail. That was one option discussed. We would feel comfortable with continuing with that process, but we would like to get input from everyone involved.
Tell me the process that's currently in place. Does a, does anyone look at those pa- packages to make sure that there is nothing in them that is a security?
Courthouse security does. So all of the, the mail is delivered to courthouse security. And then they examine it. And if there's anything suspicious, they would pull it aside. And there is a protocol if there is a package that is determined to be suspicious. If there's not, what they do then is they distribute it to each department's box. Each department then goes to the courthouse security office and it's their mail. So... There has been some thoughts that that could potentially just be one office doing that, but we haven't fully vetted that or had a discussion to see if that could be done or not. We wouldn't expect it to be someone from the, at this point in time, we would not expect it to be someone from the Cascade Annex. I, again, I, this is just my humble opinion that it could be someone from the courthouse doing that, either the treasurer or the clerk. But again, we're open for a discussion.
So deeper dive on this one. In my time here, I've heard a lot of stories about having to go down and get the sheriff's mail. Has that been taken care of to where we're not receiving all the inmates' mail? I think that is of concern to me. I think if we're going to do anything, it should be separating out where the sheriff's mail goes, especially for the inmate mail, and then separating it for the rest of the courthouse. Sure, it's not here to discuss that. I don't know your guys' thoughts on that, but at times I've heard, especially at Christmas time, the mail can be a fairly heavy lift. Is that correct statement? What's your feedback on that?
I personally think with the way that it's working now, uh, we, the, so Cinda and Annette and my departments, we can make turns to come up and get the annexes mail. You know, we can look out, but I think it should still all come to the courthouse. I think trying to separate it out in different locations and just ask them to use the mail, you know, pieces of mail all the time. I, I think we should keep it the way it is. And then the, the folks in the new range, the annex just come get up the mail. I can pick it up on my way through the mornings, yesterday's mail. I mean, we might get it what, one day later?
There might be some concern with time delays.
I think it's important to get the mail every day.
No, I, right, right.
Well, however it works out.
I think, so the post office is pretty adamant about you can't come pick up the mail prior to 10:30. At 10:30, that's when we get today's mail. And then we have to roll off.
Mail that's being sent out before. What I heard Sue say though was the mail would be delivered here into their boxes and she could get them the next morning out of those boxes.
That's what I meant. That's what I meant by that.
And that would be a day later for us and, I mean...
Well, we can do it however.
I know, but we're receiving letters and, you know, for public hearings that are scheduled and things like that, just the time delay.
But we'd let you guys work out what your collection is.
Logistics, absolutely. The, the schedule of people who pick up the mail, I know the treasurer's office does it in November, December, and January. And does the assessor's office take it?
I have them worried March, April.
And then is the sheriff's office? I'm not sure who takes it.
June, July.
I'm not sure who takes it. I go, who does make these a lot? Where are you at? Are you doing it now?
Then we will also be in...
I thought it was the sheriff's office.
But we're also doing it for general election.
So when an election, you guys do the mail through November?
So for you three ladies, then you just, what, one of you take four months, next four months, next four months?
Get it from the boxes down here.
We can come every day. We're out every day.
Is the assessor's office still okay with picking up the county's mail for those three months, going to the post office, bringing it back here? That person could wait until it's separated and then take it over?
We can be, um, so the good thing about us being February, March, April, we're done before we have to certify values. And then we can reuse one of our assessor reval vehicles for the front office to be able to run the post office, end of the forecast, patch the annex. So, yeah, we can still take it.
The only problem during that movement and getting it out after the post office, so I wonder if we would switch that out and that's something here. Take the mail. Get it from the back.
Yeah, are we going to have a postage machine?
I doubt it. Everybody's just responsible.
Because we have massive mailing. Come use the machine and then they have to take it down at a certain...
Treasurer's office doesn't have any vehicle.
Todd has a vehicle, doesn't he?
Yeah, we have one vehicle.
Don't have the other vehicle other than Todd's.
The post office and the treasurer's office doesn't have a vehicle.
They used to have one here that people...
Maybe we need to check on that again, I don't know. There needs to be one available for everybody to go do that.
Just use the same vehicle.
We can check with Jeff on that and see what he has.
That would be nice.
I think we've done that and they...
We should check again because it seems...
There's been a change in the postmaster, I think.
Yeah. I'm sure that we're one of the heaviest mail accounts that they have. And I think that it would be, they're delivering mail anyway.
I can't imagine that they're not, I mean, it's commercial mail.
They don't get out and go, they have those drive up. Your room, those office box sitting on a street.
But are they delivering commercial mail downtown? I mean, McCall, that's the only thing they deliver is commercial mail.
Maybe we could have a conversation with the postmaster and see if they would do something else.
I'd be asking because I think they're legally mandated to have.
Not within city limits.
Oh, really?
And the reason that I bring that up is because, I mean, we do the mail in November, December, January. And the weather's bad and I have had staff themselves getting mail. And it's, luckily it wasn't having issue, but it, it could be in the future, especially if we're carrying all those boxes. I mean, the crates of mail that we get during tax time are big. Also, we get all of the jail Christmas presents. So it's, I think that it's something to consider, asking the postal service.
Who's going to ask?
The clerk's office can.
Would this be in a time to change our mailing address perhaps?
Depending on if they can deliver it, yeah, we would then. Be needing to just change it to 219 North Main Street.
Or 700 South Main. Then they can deliver our own mail delivered.
It's a good thought.
We're changing our letterhead and everything. This time.
700 South Main for you three and the, what's the other one? DMV? Be the same way.
We had to put a big box out by the road. Somebody goes out and empties. Outgoing mail. You know, in hand or, or something around there that you just leave it here. Scheduling.
Sounds like there's more work to do on this. If Doug will get back to us in the clerk's office, give us some ideas. All right, next thing.
The next thing would be accounts receivable, receiving money from all of the departments, building department, planning and zoning, um, in DMV. But DMV is going to be staying here for a period of time or is DMV moving with?
I think they're going to move.
With everyone else? Okay.
So I just got an email from ITD. We have a installation date of October 20th for Zipley. I actually ordered you that email because I needed, I mean, even have a little input from you. So they are suggesting, because ITD will come move all the ITD equipment. We, they do not want us to touch it. And so they are recommending five to seven days after Zipley installs it, um, to, to do the move. But I wanted to talk to you before I...
Zipley needs to be up and operating. Zipley needs to be totally up and operating.
Right, that's why they kind of give that week buffer before we schedule ITD to come move everything.
And you said Zipley might either...
They sent an email saying the installation date has been set for October 20th.
For the entire building? Or just?
Just ITD.
Just ITD, yeah.
I, I don't know about DMV.
Well, this, he, uh, for the contractor said he's going to be ready October 15th. Done, inspected, ready, move in. And hopefully that's been told to auto corrections.
I haven't, I need to call them. I need to, I requested a meeting with you. And I could pardon these staff, they have some questions that I can't answer, you know, but I'm going to answer a lot of those. So whenever you're free for a meeting, just let us know, obviously not extra.
I think that we need to make sure that we're giving a couple of weeks leeway.
I agree.
I think we need to target maybe the weekend for a move of November 1st and 2nd.
Um, I believe November 3rd is a Monday. So I, I was going to actually ask ITD to come move the DMV on November 3rd. That gives us a little bit of buffer just in case. Once again, I want to talk to you.
That's fine.
Anyway, back to accounts receivable, sorry.
So I don't think it hurts if we get the other two divisions moved, like the first and the second over a weekend. And then, um, I don't know, you know, it's just going to be a huge endeavor to get everybody move. So for DMV, you can move on the 3rd and then progress after that. But what about the rest of the assessor's office?
Well, that will depend on exactly when we get the, we're going to like to start moving in.
So what, what is it, what are our intentions? Are we wanting to have the department come help move us?
No, we're going to have to hire a moving company.
Two men in a truck. We don't know, somebody that can move all this. You guys do the boxing, but we need somebody professional to get in their truck because they got box trucks enclosed. We don't know if it's going to rain or snow.
Coordinating that.
Uh, we will do that.
Commissioners will?
Um, and get boxes for everybody. We'll coordinate that or we'll probably ask Terry actually to coordinate the move.
And you'll get his boxes.
Make sure that boxes, yeah, we have boxes.
It'd be nice to start getting, I'm sorry, to get some boxes so we can start tracking.
Like now?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have to fit it in.
So all of their desks are handled right now? Most of them?
We'll still have to move, um, my desk, Dee's desk.
Do you have desks that match?
Yes. So the, the ones that match are going to get moved down there.
Okay.
And then the ones that aren't matching, uh, those stay here, get moved and there's something else out of there. But these and I's desk matches, let's see.
Cause we will... People can't hear you, Sue. I'm sure people can't hear you. We're online, why don't you, no, just grab another one.
The cartography girls, their desks are going to be built in. So their, uh, two desks are going to be used by our front office down there, which match. So we do have some desks that need to be moved, but none of the reval desks, they, they'll fall apart as soon as you take them apart, so.
So there needs to be a list?
You talking out in the middle or are you talking in the offices?
Talking anything that's not being provided by Idaho Corrections.
Oh. I think they weren't doing anything in the offices. I think they were doing everything out on the floor.
Madam Chairman, I apologize for interrupting myself. And the treasurer need to finalize some LT worksheets, so we're going to leave this discussion. But if there's anything else, anything else you need to bring up? Let us know. I don't think, I think the other, uh, the accounts receivable will work out amongst the departments. I don't know if it's something that needs to be discussed during this.
We'll just get a protocol in place of how you want it handled.
No, we need to advertise it either.
Exa- I think there's a security concern with some of it.
Yeah, agreed.
So we'll, I'm going to send up, um, Kirsten, just to the clerk and then...
That works.
Thank you.
So on the desks, there needs to be, um, a conversation with Scott and Terry. They need to order all the desks. We want everything that matches as much as possible.
The desks in the office, Sheri and I just walked through it before lunch. Several offices behind doors that don't have anything in them. And that's the desks that Sheri's talking about.
You have new desks. Okay, so we need a list of exactly what you need that is not being moved, okay?
I'll double check.
Move, then, you know, let's go ahead and use those.
I'll double check, but I think we are going to utilize all of our matching desks and it was enough.
Okay.
For your side?
I believe so, but I'll, I'll go back through it again and make sure.
Just make sure for all three divisions that you guys have all of the furniture that you need for your areas.
So we will need furniture. Did you see the two desks back in P and B corner?
Yep, saw those two.
Laurie and mine. And then we'll need desks for Todd and Hannah. Now Hannah will be the front person. Is that a built-in desk because she's the handicap receipt or do we need to order a desk?
Isn't that through that Idaho? I mean, that should have been one of the...
That's not through the Idaho Corrections, no.
And have Terry and Scott go down there? Cause you're going to have two of them up front too. Those all need to match that front area.
What do you mean Idaho Corrections?
That's who we're buying the partitions and desks from for all of reval and, and our side, I guess.
Yeah, those three front will have to match. I don't know how easy it's going to be to match Todd's.
It's fine, just try and get him as close as you can to, yeah, to what's there. We just don't want everybody taking your old desks down there and nothing matches and nothing coordinates.
And we might want a smaller desk for him because we might have to get someone else to put two people in there.
Right. I think that makes sense. So the list, I mean, Terry and Scott are going to need time to get all this stuff ordered and delivered down there. So, and make sure you're thinking about chairs, chairs to sit in front of your desks if you are going to anticipate having somebody come in and sit down in front of you.
Those all have to match also.
Um, yeah.
I've got plenty of chairs, but...
We, we would like it to be professional, professional looking, you know, matching best we can. It's like here, we got four or five different chairs just in this room.
Yeah, guys, um, so Idaho Corrections can do the moving.
Oh.
It's what?
Can move us from here to there.
Idaho Corrections can do the moving from here to...
That would be amazing.
Would be sweet. They're building our new desk too.
Yep, Noreen just reminded me of that.
Oh, that's awesome.
I had forgot about that. Thanks, Noreen.
Thank you, yes.
And it looks like June's desk will be Noreen's desk and it matches all of the other ones that'll be up front. I think I'm okay. I don't think I need any additional desks ordered other than what we're getting from Idaho Corrections.
Well, you need new office chairs? Any of you guys for the offices?
We try to buy a chair or two every year towards the end of our budget to, if we have enough money left. So we're actually doing pretty good on chairs for us anyway. I don't know what you guys have.
Mine looks horrible, but it doesn't cut off the circulation in my legs. It's very comfortable.
I understand that one.
Can we find the same chair, but it's in better shape?
That one, um, I got just when Scott D. Young left. That's how quickly that fake leather came off.
Oh, my goodness.
Because it's so thin. I can shop for a new chair. I don't know, but it has to be right. What do you want us to do on our files? We have mismatch files. Got to go somewhere. If they're going to be in the middle, they're going to have to match.
No. We're not buying any files because...
Oh, file cabinets, is that what you're talking about?
We're not buying file cabinets. Those need to go away eventually here. And we'll use the ones that match as we can clear out some of those. And my understanding is though that you guys had replaced those in that space. I mean, when, when we did the footprint, there were areas where your filing cabinets were going to go.
Right, that's, that was the plan.
Yes. And that's still the plan. A filing cabinet is filing cabinet.
And you're aware that that's...
We've got a lot of those.
Our file cabinets will fit.
Do you guys want to give Terry Corrections' phone number to talk to them about moving us?
Yes.
Yeah, I think she'd be a good one to do the contact on that.
And Neil, will you take care of that then?
Yep.
Okay. And then as we get closer, you guys will just communicate with us that, hey, it looks like, uh, that we can move your department on these days or, you know, whatever. You'll just try to give us the heads up.
Is any date that's not good for either one of you guys?
It would be on the end of this month.
So after that, you're, you're good. It slows down anyhow.
We'll be busy.
Yeah. And you're...
First part of November.
Pretty much done anyhow.
Good for us. We don't have, I mean, that first week, we're going to have to be able to produce a packet and staff reports and all that stuff.
That's why we're trying to do it on the weekend, maybe get everything, you know, in and settled before.
It will take us a while to get everything put away and shared. Have to be settled for a while.
And that actually on the 3rd of November is when we start our Monday meetings again.
And we're going back to Mondays?
Yep.
Oh.
They, they overrode me.
You guys decided you liked Mondays better?
We're missing too many meetings.
I'm having a hard time with Wednesdays, just getting used to them.
Yeah, we're, we...
There's just too many other meetings that go on.
Wednesdays turned out to be, we thought they'd be great and they were, but we're finding it was, we all just struggled a little bit, so.
Okay.
And starting October...
Actually, we need Jeremy at this meeting too to make sure that Zipley is...
So we're, all of October, we're in Wednesdays.
Yep, looks like it.
And then starting November, we're starting Mondays.
The partition walls are, I haven't been down there to look. I need to go look. We have to have somewhere to hang some...
You need to go down and look.
Shills, yeah.
You need to go down and look. They've got them all sheet rock. They're just finishing up their taping. And once they get all taped and texturing done, then they're going to be painting here next week.
They'll be hanging on, you'll be hanging on regular wood sheet rock walls.
Yeah, they're all wood studs.
And then is that when Jeremy will go in and make sure he gets all of his wires in where he wants them?
His wires are already in. All the gata wires are all pulled. Everything's been physically in place. So, yeah, all he does is does the pop, what do you call that? Patchwork, they patch them down. He puts them on the patch board.
So people don't trip on them.
Yep. So he'll be, that's what I understand is that he does that.
Okay.
So I'll connect with...
That would make sense, yeah.
I'll connect with Jeremy on that.
You're going to ask Cam when the Zipley will be up?
Yep.
I know that Zipley will be there on the 20th, October 20th for the DMV stuff. That's all I know. I don't know if it's for anything else.
I know Zipley's already got it in the building. We got guys working downstairs.
I think it's probably all set up.
It's just all the ports are all functional and ready to go when you guys move in and plug in.
Well, and he's already been doing all that, so. He positive he's got everything dialed. He's been tracking it closely. The one concern that I have that I don't think is going to be done is the parking lot. So we've got, we need, um, right now they're working on a survey and then we've got to have a contractor go in and pull up that asphalt and...
We're, I, I don't know. I'm meeting with Greg Tachslay with Crestline. Crestline's here, is that right? Morning of the 18th and we're going to, we already got the prints for the old prints that showed it. And we're going to show them what we'd like to see done. And he's going to draw something up so that we have a contractor to look at it and bid on it.
And we have to do an RFP, so that's...
Yeah, so...
So it's going to take, yeah.
Well, I mean, you may have to park at the fairgrounds and walk up.
Might be an issue for a short time until...
Hopefully they can have it done before it snows, so you're not trying to block on the ice, but...
That's November and that's ice.
It may not get done this year. By the time we get an RFP done and a sign and everything.
I'd rather see it done in spring when there isn't ice than try to navigate ice.
Feel a lot safer. So here's the email that I got from Ron Butler. I wanted to provide you with an update regarding the internet circuit for the new motor vehicle location at 700 South Main Street. Zipley has scheduled the circuit installation for October 20th. To account for any potential delays, we recommend planning your move-in date five to seven days after the installation date. Based on this timeline, do you have a preferred move-in date that we could add to our calendar? I will now email him back and tell him November 3rd.
Yeah, it works. That works.
So in our office, we're going to have segregated files. We have files, you know, that we need to keep long-term that can go upstairs. So is it going to be good enough to label stuff and they'll take it upstairs? Or are they just going to bring it in, put it in a big pile?
Who's they?
The movers.
So are these files going to be in a, in a filing cabinet where they can just take the filing cabinet upstairs?
Some will be in file cabinets. Probably most of the ones that go upstairs for long-term would be boxes. These that we don't access very often.
I think if they're in boxes and you've got them separated out, long-term storage, we can have them put upstairs.
There's no reason to.
We'll bring a label to put on every box then of where it should go.
And they, just to let you ladies know, the inmates are the ones that come down and do all this.
That's fine.
Kind of temporary. I don't like it.
They, they, they're the ones that do all, they're the ones that are going to be building all this. And they come, I assume they come out with their own sheriff supervision. I don't know how that organization works. Craig probably knows a lot better than anybody, but they're the ones that'll be doing all this.
Do you want us on site those days, like November 1st and November 2nd, that weekend? When our stuff is being moved?
Yeah, I, I think that might be a good call.
Yep.
Have at least one person, you guys, one other, you know, something where you don't have to pay so much overtime, but that's how you're going to overtime. That's how you're gonna overtime. You don't, that's why I'm saying you guys.
So if, so if we are going to schedule moving the building department and planning and zoning on, say, November first and second, and then the DMV will be November third, which ITD will do most of that, we'll have a little bit of, uh, of county property, I guess you could say, but I think the girls could probably box most of that up. I mean, I'm throwing my pickup. I mean, it's not that big of a deal. Um, so when, when do we want to schedule, say, our front office and then of course, rebalance?
I think it'll be the first and the second.
Oh, you wanna do it all of them all in one, okay. Okay.
But what we need to do is check with, um, the correctional.
Make sure they can do that.
I think they have to go home Saturday night and then we'll have to come back Sunday. I would think. They're not gonna put them in hotels up here. They're coming out of prison.
Just need to, just need to ask a question.
So, yeah, so we'll ask Terry.
First and second would be better for us than probably the eighth and ninth.
Well, isn't there a holiday somewhere in there?
The fourth, no, the eleventh.
The eleventh. It's Veterans Day, I believe.
Saturday, Sunday, Monday, we work.
Oh, right in the middle of the.
If we got boxes, we'd pack a box every day.
Yep. Yeah, the sooner the better.
Yep.
Because then we don't.
Sure, who would get boxes?
We can still get our jobs done.
We can organize, we can start throwing things away.
Yes. I've always been trying to kinda do that, but.
So you can get them.
I'm not getting very far.
Get them up here.
Scanning like.
Yeah.
You just need, what size boxes? Something you can carry, not something like.
Yeah, like, like document boxes, you know?
Mm-hmm.
See the boxes.
Probably get some different sized boxes actually, so it'll be different things that'll be different.
So, on the stuff that we have and, I mean, like my bookcase, I've got a bunch of books and old magazines. What's, I mean, do I need to keep all of those old books? I mean, they're manuals, they're things like that. Stuff that you probably find online.
Are they outdated?
Probably not, because there's only so many ways to do something.
I would throw away anything that we don't need to move down there. It needs to be fresh and clean unless it's something that you know you need.
Well, it's something the county's invested in. It's education materials. Uh, the magazines, I have no problem throwing away.
When was the last time we used the, the stuff?
Well, we probably, uh, the last was here.
I think it's time to throw it away.
Well, and I don't have a problem, but it's county property.
Oh, we just need to do an ordinance to, oh, we need to do that online where, oh, I guess we're in a meeting, but it's not an action item. So we probably need to go ahead and do it as an action item.
In your museum that you have.
Idaho Historical Society.
There you go.
Well, it's, it's, most of it's manuals and, I mean, some of it I, I have, I would, I do keep. We can throw away a lot of the old magazines that we kept. We've got a lot of old code books, but we still use them. We still have some of them.
Anything you're still using. We don't use it for that long then. We don't need it anymore. I threw away everything in that filing cabinet.
Where are my candy?
Oh, I'm sorry?
Some of our stuff we, we wanna keep, you know, for site-specific applications and things.
I will put on an agenda for destruction of records. And, uh, just let us know what it is that you need to destroy.
Old manuals, old magazines.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know that.
You're probably gonna have a shelf in your office anyhow, as you can put all that old stuff back on.
We don't need to clutter up a brand-new space with stuff we don't use and don't need, so.
Public, public information stuff.
So can I circle back to something real quick? So you, you guys want a list of the desks that need to be moved down there, like?
Terry and Scott need that list. Terry and Scott.
Terry, so get the list to them?
Well, not the ones that need to move down there. I mean, they're gonna be doing those anyhow, but.
How are you guys?
New desks that need.
I was hoping you would've seen it on the agenda income, but I should've reached out specifically.
We're talking about new desks that need to be put in offices that have nothing in them right now.
Oh, no, I understand. I, I understood that. So what I'm asking is, I have, oh, perfect. Uh, wait, one, two, three, four, five desks that all match.
Mm-hmm.
That we do not need new ones, that we can move down there. Do I need to provide a list of those to you or Terry? So that she can tell the moving company or, or should I ju, or I'll just be here that weekend and say, we need to move this desk down and this desk down? How, how do you want?
I think that's all we need to do is let the moving company know you'll be moving desks from here down there along with all the stuff.
Right.
I think they could do it all.
Something on the ones that are gonna be moved.
Okay.
And you guys just have to say, this one goes in that office.
Speed really quick. So we're discussing the actual move from here down. It looks like maybe potentially November first and second.
Saturday, Sunday.
Correctional Institute that is doing all of the partition walls, um, has a moving section that they can actually move us. So if we can count on them, but Terry, can we task you to take this on as part of your responsibilities?
Yes.
And, okay, so.
Is there a contact for them?
Cindy Thorpe is who we have ordered the petitions and, uh, the desks from. I do not know if she would be the point of contact for, uh, the actual moving. I don't know if it's a different division, but, um, let me find the number here.
We need to talk things like the last movers. We didn't have to unload file cabinets or nothing. We just wrap them up and move them.
I'm hoping.
Pack anything. Need to find out if they do the same thing or if they're gonna be unloaded and unboxed or.
Uh, yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll, yeah. Got it, yeah.
I got Cindy's number, Cindy Thorpe.
Yep.
I don't know whose number that Noreen's been working with.
Uh, we've been, we've been dealing with Cindy Thorpe.
She'll email it to Terry, so she's got electronic through that.
I guess the same person that met us down there won't be.
You see Scott on it, so.
Was it, was it a lady?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
She had a guy that had retired from the position she was filling, you know, because of helping her out with.
So, it sounds like Neil's contractor, October fifteenth, is what they've got for completion. But if we wait until the first and the second, that gives a couple of weeks leeway just in case anything needs to be done.
It always takes longer.
DMV will move on the third and that week because ITD needs to come and move all of their computer equipment. So we will schedule with ITD to do it on November third. Um, so we need to get boxes purchased now. So if you guys could do up a purchase, Home Depot, you know, wherever you get stuff, office supply stuff, different sized boxes so that the ladies can start packing up the stuff that they don't need now. And then we'll just start a list of it. And then the, all of them are going to notify you guys on any desks that we need, any chairs we need, any, uh, you know, filing cabinets, library shelves, any of that kinda stuff. So there will be a list of purchases required. So, if we can get those here and delivered, maybe the thirty-first, thirtieth, thirty-first, something like that, so we can get those delivered before move-in on the first and the second. We're gonna need a cleaning company to go through and clean that place after construction. Make sure that it's ready for move-in.
Contact her, Buck, and provide that. Have her do the work.
I can ask him. I didn't, I haven't thought that far ahead. I'll, I'll sure ask Michael.
Have it cleaned up on the.
I'd have the furniture come earlier so it can be put together.
If it needs to be put together, depending on.
So you guys are not selecting the furniture that you will?
No, Scott has a pre-selection kind of a deal. We've been buying all the same desks.
Yeah, that's too, that's too much at offices.
Do they come preassembled?
After all the desks came from, this is where it's.
Are they, do they come preassembled? Do they set it all up?
Um, sometimes Michael do it for you.
Okay.
And stuff like this. You have to ask him, you know, Brett, you know, that was his business at one time. He was, you know, office furniture and stuff, so.
If you guys will just kinda work on that, tell us what we need to do, but, you know, have the desk, whatever, ready to go by the first.
Yeah, if we can get a copy of that so we can pick our desks.
I thought the president's.
Uh, so they, we have ordered the petitions and desks for rebound, um, from them and they will come put those up and put those desks together. Um, the rest of our desks are being moved down, so I don't believe that our side needs any kind of installation of anything that isn't already being taken care of through, through those.
On our desk, we need to know if you want left or right-hand returns. Or if you don't want, on all this, they're different, they're, you know, the color you have, but they have, if you want to return it on one side, it's gotta be called out.
And we'd like them all to, to match the same color that's in all the rest offices.
Mm-hmm.
Cause that's, like, uh, in Cindy's office, there's like three offices there, two offices.
There's two that already have desks.
Don't have any desks at all.
We have two desks.
Two of the ones that were left from Maritime.
Yep. But the other two offices are totally empty.
They're lighter desks and.
I think they're, no, they're pretty deep red.
Pretty red?
Yeah, yeah, they're pretty dark, well.
They're definitely a cherry.
So will, is it okay if I go ahead and order two smaller desks for Todd's office?
Give them the order, you don't order them.
I know, but can I get two desks you, now?
Yeah, that's fine.
Oh, yeah.
So we can get that office set up, because I anticipate needing another.
Just email.
A lot.
Just email who is.
Can you guys will pick it out then?
What's that?
You'll pick it out then?
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll order the desks we've been ordering.
Right, but I don't want them that big. I want them smaller.
And just put that in your email.
I'm gonna put two desks in one office.
Just put that in your email. They do all the ordering, so.
You talking about a desk like what's back there, Cindy?
Yeah, something smaller, because, you know, code compliance, they sit there, they, but they go out in the field a lot too. They don't need a large desk and the offices aren't big enough for two people if you have a really big desk.
So if you had one like what's back there at the back.
Something smaller.
Like that?
Consider it a credenza.
Something that.
Yeah, probably yours.
Something small return.
Say put it back to back or against the wall.
Same size as this desk.
Mm-hmm.
Just give them the information that, you know, what you want.
Okay.
They'll do the.
I just sent you Terry, uh, not Terry, um, Cindy's phone number and then the main, the main number with their business hours, address, email and phone number. But when I go to their website, I don't see anything about like a moving service, so. But somebody said.
I know, right?
Well, so I, one of my appraisers worked there years and years ago. And he said that they will do that. I think Noreen talked to Cindy about it.
I have to sit in it before.
So.
Because I'm not gonna sit there and have my legs go asleep here.
Yeah, like sooner than later in case we have to find somebody else maybe.
I want two examples to have of the ones.
And I guess the first question, can we get you to come move us on a weekend?
Yeah.
Cindy, you setting these at all?
I, I'm not sure how many.
Should fall out of them.
Okay.
You know, I've got to get into the chair. I've got two chairs since I've been here. The one I have now, the one I had forever.
Right.
I just gotta have a nice one. So.
Right, unless we can make arrangements with.
Yeah, that's true.
What about, do you guys want, uh, carpet pad, like the, the things to rail your chairs on? So we need to order some of those, get some fresh ones of those.
So did we decide what was going on with the three, um, intake desks? Are those new?
Are they built-ins?
I don't know. That's what we were talking about.
Yeah, I think, you know, I don't think they're built-ins.
It's just.
The, the three up front. I thought that the, um, over there, the prison was gonna build those.
Yeah, the two in the building department were gonna be the higher.
Mm-hmm, and yours is lower.
Mine was the handicapped one.
Mm-hmm.
But is there a built-in cabinet there? Is there a built-in countertop?
A built-in countertop? I don't know how wide it is.
So she'll have to have a separate desk.
Behind it, to step back away from it.
I would think so. I mean, we, I'll ask Mike.
Are you guys doing pony walls in between each desk or are they petitions?
No, they're, they're, it's already built.
In between each desk. But it's, the question is, is that, you know, where, where are they gonna put their chair? Where are they gonna work? So is it, I mean, Hannah's gonna need a chair for up front where that countertop is. But is she gonna work off that countertop or is she gonna step back ten feet?
To an actual desk.
Desk, yeah.
That's, that's up to you guys.
I envisioned her having the intake with a desk. Behind her is that other cabinet with all the forms and everything.
So what, what I just heard you say was, there is an intake cabinet. You want her sitting there all the time with some kind of a return.
Well, it'll be the intake. And then she can have her desk right there.
So a narrow desk, like a credenza desk. That sits right beside you. Kids need to go down there and look and see the kinda space you have and then go from there. Because yours are higher counters, so they're gonna need a higher, you know, chair and then step back from that in order to go to a desk. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, just like that. You just stand there and do your stuff and then go sit out at an actual desk. You just need to know what your needs are.
But Hannah's gonna need to be sitting down anyway because it's ADA compliant, so it's low.
Why not just use the same area?
If there's enough room there, yeah, for a desk, you take and figure that one out and then.
That makes sense.
You're gonna order.
I don't know if I'll be able to order a table yet because I'm not sure how much room is maybe taken up by file cabinets.
I thought you're putting file cabinets back in that one room.
You've never seen all of our file cabinets.
No, I haven't.
Ever been in the back room?
No, no, going back rooms.
So we're gonna have that one room, probably that little meeting room will be lined. And then we'll put some back-to-back out behind Hannah.
Yeah, remember the one they had downstairs in Oki's office? It was wrapped all the way around and then the whole middle was back-to-back. That was a lot of.
They have a whole room down there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so Ron Butler just emailed me back and he said, I will check with ITS and get back with you to make sure November third will work for the DMV move.
Okay. Cool. The other thing with the DMV move, we've somehow gotta strike that parking lot so that people don't park where the long trailers are gonna come in, the RVs are gonna come in to get their stickers. So they're gonna need to come into that parking lot, go right and park along that, um.
We'll just have to put signage up, I think.
Yeah.
You know?
Or DMV parking only or something like that. Something's gonna have to be striped, so.
We'll have to do some pre-planning and, you know, once we figure out what space we are gonna have and then we can put signage, paint.
Yeah, but some of the contractors, I mean, they'll be driving in with their trailers.
Yeah, and they'll park in the same spot.
Well, right, but I mean, after the finished.
There's, there's gonna be plenty of room. There's a lot, along that, uh, piece hardware wall, there's, there's quite a long space there. So we can put guys pulling in with their trailers and then they can make the route and go right back out, so.
We're going to have to envision as we get busier what that looks like. That's a long-term conversation.
Mm-hmm.
It might be tight.
It could be tight getting around it.
Mm-hmm.
We may have to move the trash dumpster.
Well, it might make the most sense.
Yeah.
For, to get as many parking spots as.
It could go down below.
Well, it could also, it could also go on the west side of the building.
Mm-hmm. That was what I was envisioning.
And that guy could get in and out pretty easily right there, where's the trash guy?
On the scenic byways?
Yeah, that's ugly.
On the scenic byway, we put a nice fence around it, a little doghouse.
Go down to the.
Tree, we put some trees around it.
Down in the PA area, there's a little turnaround down there. It would be perfect at the end of that.
No burbs, no burbs.
We'll argue that one later.
We need to figure out where we're gonna put the work. That's a lot for you guys in a week.
Well, I'll, I'll just have my staff keep them down there at the fairgrounds.
Yeah, and that's probably what we're all gonna have to do is keep some things off-site until we can figure it out. If we get all that redone, I think that. So we get all that redone, I think that there's probably a new parking lot that's gonna be designed down below, that's not gonna happen this year, so. We're gonna have to work on that and work on it as we go.
I'm meeting with Chris line up there eighteenth, eight o'clock. Greg's gonna walk us through the whole thing. Start putting that together in idea.
Wonderful.
But get anything done this year, I don't think there's a contractor out there who's got enough time to do it, but we have to put it out for bid, so then.
Yeah.
Everything goes backwards.
Just grateful they get moved down there before.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we're on.
Access.
We've already lost too much time.
If we have to park down below, can we come in?
Yes, you can go in the door down there and go to the elevator.
Okay, because I don't want me sliding down the hill.
No.
No, we don't want you sliding down.
Fairgrounds will stop.
Yeah, but. You and I can too.
We can come in through the PA entrance up into the back. There's an elevator there and a stairwell.
Yeah.
And they keep those doors locked.
You have it.
Just, just the door into their office.
And there will be a card at the top of the stairs, so there'll be a card reader at the top of the stairs to get in. All right, I would recommend all of you go down and take a look at it, look at your space.
How do we get in?
Envision your card reader works, should work anyway.
And it's.
Card reader on the front door, mine didn't work the other day, so we have to get ahold of Jeremy if that don't work.
They're down there working.
They're working right now, but, you know. Um, thank you, we are kinda throwing you guys under the bus at this moment in time, but you're the most logical division to deal with this, so.
I mean, you're not.
Nope. I'm giving you a break, Scott.
Are there any matching chairs here that you want us, that you're not gonna use anymore?
Take them all.
Should we just, I mean, these are nice chairs. I think.
Whatever's got rollers on it is a nice chair, all the rest of these things can go as far as we concerned.
What about the, did I, I don't even remember who I heard it from, but are you guys, uh, entertaining the thought of replacing? The jury's ch- chairs from courtrooms?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, been floated by us.
It's been approved.
And those are matching chairs and, I mean, they're twenty-five years old, I've heard they're in terrible shape. Oh, are they?
I don't know, they're just, they're like these.
And people are complaining that they're in terrible shape.
Oh.
We have a ton of those, pink ones. So. No.
Preferably for like out front if people are waiting.
Yeah.
Well, we got a whole annex full from that.
Yeah. Yeah, we do have a lot of those.
I don't want all of these chairs.
But, I mean, they're not all that attractive, but, um.
The wood wouldn't match our darker cherry color.
That is a true statement. Yeah.
And those chairs break a, a lot, I think they do.
I've seen those chairs break, I've seen.
Yeah, okay, 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 we're gonna take one of these, so.
Um, I know we have a bunch of those, but, I mean, it is a beautiful entryway, there's a fireplace there. Let's, let's show, you know, let's, let's show something that's kinda classy in that entryway. The other thing on the entryway, I don't know yet what the security council is gonna advise, I am thinking that we'll have security down there. So on the west side of that entrance, so headed toward the assessor's office, there's a big open space there. We probably need to do a desk in there, which will be for a security officer. So we do need to look and see if we have a desk that will fit in that area. I'm sorry?
Not, not the front desk, well.
But it's on the side over to the left. So I suppose security could sit there at the front desk, well, I guess maybe they can, we need to figure out what to do with that west side. So maybe if there's matching chairs on the one side, a nice seating area, we do a nice seating area on the other side.
We've got a big table in the meeting room.
Yes, we need a conference table in the meeting room.
Enter.
What happened to those red ones that were in here?
Down, actually downstairs and we used to go and do the boardroom.
The cherry wood type.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Those actually would match the desks that we're taking down.
Yeah. And we have the top of it redone? Why don't we have the top redone? The janitor just destroyed that, we should've held them accountable.
Meetings down there, but.
Use it for now. And we can put on some other kinda topper or something.
I don't even know if that's.
I'd like to maybe put it, I might. Filing cabinets? I don't think we can have too many upstairs because we access them.
Mm-hmm.
For what?
We're gonna have to use.
In the conference room, some of my filing cabinets.
This is big, it's a big long room.
Big, yeah, it's a big one. So there's lots of storage out in front of where the ADA spaces and your spaces, there's tons of filing cabinets for a lot of the. Um, or not filing cabinets, doors, yeah, cabinets for a lot of things that, office supplies, that kinda stuff.
Copier room and then just outside the copier room, that whole wall is cabinets.
And we're safe.
I would think that you guys will do that a lot more than the other side.
Well, yeah, I don't, I don't wanna intrude on their side.
Well, there's gonna be a door between you guys.
Okay.
But the, and they will have card.
Well, that'll keep the public from going through that.
But I'm assuming that you guys will use that side a lot more, these guys will use the other side, so there's not a.
Not as many ca- yeah, okay.
Many people in and out.
I can't remember what you guys have for cabinets on your side.
In the kitchen, we need a table for employees in the employee break room. And I didn't see in there if they took their refrigerator or not.
I think they took the fridge.
So we might need a fridge.
I think they left the dishwasher, is that what they left, I think?
They should've, it was attached, so therefore it would've been.
Oh. I believe they took the fridge.
Set up the, that room also for employees, we need an employee break space.
Might need a couple refrigerators. There's a lot of people in the assessor's office and.
Mike.
You guys ought to go down and look at it, you can see your space now.
It's, it's coming alive.
Yeah.
Yep, it is coming alive.
Very exciting, I can hardly wait to get there.
So Neil, do you think it would be, uh, appropriate to tentatively schedule, uh, Idaho Correctional Industries to come up? To install petitions and desks? And, or do you want that, you want them to try to do that on the November first and second?
No, I'd rather Sam come up prior to that.
I would too, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, and I'll, I need to.
I'm a little scared to schedule anything.
Mike, talk to Cindy and say, how much lead, lead time do you need?
Okay.
Cause I need to coordinate that with Michael on actual completion date, getting occupancy from the city of Cascade.
Well, if they're saying the fifteenth.
That's what, what, that's what we're shooting for, he's shooting for.
That last week is like the twenty-seventh, so, I mean, they could have that whole week to do anything. Twenty-seven through the thirty-first, somewhere in there.
See what kinda lead time they need.
Okay.
Cause it means, if they could come up and set all that in place. Then when you do move, it's.
For the week of the twenty-seventh.
Now's when they could start delivering furniture too and get everything put together and make sure everything's clean, I mean, if they're saying the fifteenth, we're giving them a whole extra week. Get any snappings taken care of, get things cleaned.
I'll check with Michael on it.
On the twenty-seventh to get everything set and ready. October.
I'm not gonna get any desks.
We're not gonna get any desks.
That's, or we've got by this month.
Oh, no.
I need a list and a. Or Han desks.
All right. What else can we think of?
Okay, I get with Michael.
Window coverings.
So cleaning.
I can't remember what the window coverings are.
There are.
I thought there was wood blinds.
I know that we, that cartography has asked if they didn't have any wood blinds on those high windows and sun beats in, I guess it's pretty blinding. Um, so they did request.
The blinds are something, they want something up there.
They just need to match what everything else is.
Agreed, everything else is wood blinds.
We just send what, what is needed and Terry will have to have somebody go measure that and see what's needed there, but make sure they all match.
And internal windows.
On everything.
Mm-hmm.
Internal windows? We can have covers on those.
Internal windows, like for your office?
Or like pull down shades or something?
Like a privacy shade you can put down.
They have on all the, everything's.
Do we need to frost them?
I don't know, I think they have the wood blinds and then. There was some internal.
I don't remember any internals.
Well, the reason, I don't, I don't think there is either, and the only thing that I'm thinking in my mind is, that is the natural light that comes into that center space. So you get people bring, or you know, pulling down blinds, you lose that natural lighting. So I'm wondering if we frost them, lightly frost them, and you still retain the look, you.
One last time.
Time though, then you also can't see out ever.
Right, I'd rather be able to see people coming. Unless I'm having something private going on.
So. Let's think about that, if there's like an employer evaluation where you would like to be in a private area.
Mm-hmm.
Think about putting blinds on like the conference room, where you would go to a separate area to have those types of conversations. I think that might be a better thing to have one place that could be confidential, if you will.
Mm-hmm.
That work? Rather see that than have everybody have blinds down all the time and lose our natural lighting.
I think it makes the most sense.
The natural lighting in there is nice.
It is nice, so we wouldn't really wanna.
And everybody's gonna be in and out of that conference room, you guys may have to have a.
You guys down there, you got a lot of natural lighting.
I'm excited, I'm very excited, cause I have no light at the moment.
I know.
Will you make sure that.
Let's flip the switch.
That's on the couch.
You know, something that's.
The signage down there on doors or anything.
I'll have to sign every.
They, when they come to go into finding zoning and building department, how do they know where.
Hopefully the security guard is going to be able to guide them.
Yeah, but I mean, but I mean, don't you have that one counter that runs the full length down there?
Yeah.
You know, some type of sign that sits horizontally says building department.
Mm-hmm.
Or either that or over the opening that's up there, you know, building part.
They're definitely gonna need that.
Or they, you know, they're not walking clear down to the end, they're finding zoning and they're going to.
Walk in, go.
The break. And starts.
Yeah. Makes sense too.
I won't need it.
Advertise.
I'll need it down, going down.
When are we gonna advertise?
Just that when we're gonna move, I mean.
When we have something solid.
Well, in fact, people ask.
I, I've been saying, uh, most likely November to be safe. When I'm asked. But nothing's in stone.
If it's gonna take more than two days, I'd rather see it done like on a Monday, I mean a Friday. Unless we just shut down the third. I think Friday would be better than.
They're gonna have to come look at the amount of boxes that you have and give us an idea, they may start on Friday, they'll have plenty of opportunities to start on Friday if they wanna do that. That's Halloween.
You're, you're just trying to stay open for business, is that what you're trying to do? Cindy, you're just trying to stay open for business?
Friday's Halloween, never mind. Um.
Well, the third, we will have a mission meeting.
Yeah, I was just trying to.
Yeah, that'll, that'll be interesting.
Cause if we shut down on a Friday, it probably wouldn't be the biggest deal.
We're just gonna have to give, we're gonna have to have them take a look at it and give us an idea on how long it's gonna take.
We'll start packing as soon as we get.
How soon, how soon can you guys get boxes for them?
We've got boxes. I guess we'll have to order them.
Yeah.
You have the department's plan there on last night.
Like Amazon or somebody like that?
These will come out of the ARPA funds. That, these will come out of ARPA.
Yeah, we'll have to go up the, uh, and see if we can get some Home Depot, go to some.
For Home Depot, office supply should have some good ones. And as we're ordering all of this stuff, all of these expenses come out of ARPA. So make sure that it's not, you know, out of anybody's budgets when.
Office savers might, you might have them too, Michael.
Yeah, we talked to Mike. Yeah, we just, we just need to get the budget line number for processing.
Ask Arps, Arps office.
And just little incidentals where you can just use our own budgets.
Yeah.
Just little lights and stuff like that.
Desk lights and things like that, yeah.
I think for now, that's the plan.
Did you give her Cindy's number, is that what you did?
I would recommend that ICI comes up.
Did you get Terry Cindy's number?
I did. Cindy's at the main office, she has everything, she has their name, their address, their main office and her email.
I talked to her the other day and she, she hadn't got to say anything on this desk and.
And I'm assuming those guys.
She'd been going through some stuff. So she's apologized.
She's a little flighty anyway.
Maybe.
I'm fairly certain of it.
As far as moving?
Oh, I'm gonna go there, Chelsea.
I mean, we can, we can do, you know, RFP that was just offered that.
You probably have a better feel for that, don't you?
Hit it softly.
Okay.
It's gonna be under fifty thousand, we don't have to do an RFP, she might just see what they're gonna do for and what, yeah, we can find local too. Locals would be, I would think easier, cause I do think these guys will have to go back home.
I mean, we could even check to see if maybe there, something could be arranged for.
Depending on how many guys are involved.
I don't know, I mean.
Love to come.
Sure they would.
Well, I mean, if nothing else, I mean, just maybe be for just one night or maybe two, I mean, maybe they have enough room that they can just throw down a sleeping bag for the night or something. I, I don't know what, or.
I have no idea, I'm pro call either, so. I would check with ICI and then I'd see if we can find some local guys, I, I'm never, I'm not familiar with moving companies. But we might just be able to put out on social media looking for movers and. We can get.
See what makes it.
I was just thinking that, they're always, they're always trying to raise money.
Yeah. See what makes it come there.
All the equipment to move stuff.
Oh, good call, Scott, they're gonna have all the.
They got all the right hand trucks, they got the moving blankets, they got shrink wrap deals to wrap up, you know. You could grab somebody here, it's gonna try and do it on the side, they're not gonna have.
Good call.
They moved, moved the U of I and we moved the prosecutor in one day.
Yeah.
Up there, cause they came up with their crews, they got all the equipment and they just, they knock it out, I mean, if it's ready for them to pick up and move or anything, wrapping up, they're gone.
Bringing in their sons or something like that.
My three sons and then I saw another one, uh, the other day over by Howdy's. It's, it's one that's been around quite a while.
Well, if ICI, I mean, if they do that, they'd probably be prepared to do that as well.
Yeah, I think, yeah, if they're, if they're going out and, you know, doing this, they're gonna come with all this.
Right.
The hand trucks, the moving blankets, the. Paper, everything, you know.
And, and insurance.
Protect your.
Yeah.
Cause they took some of the guests, they moved, you know, they wrap them up.
Insurance, just get pricing on both.
Cool.
All right, I can't think of anything else right now.
The biggest, I think.
Yeah, they, um.
Yeah.
They just come up and take one of the shrink wrap deals and wrap them up so the doors can't come out. Off the door fully loaded.
Yeah, yeah, we don't have to do any of that, that'll cut down on the boxes we need to.
Definitely wrapped up, you know, the guests they had to move, they put the moving blankets over and tape that on.
So ICI was just going to put the desks together.
And the petitions, all the one. And the petitions are the one.
And potentially.
And potentially, and potentially move us, yeah.
They brought, they brought up their meeting when they came up here to look at the.
Oh, okay.
And chairs go to those desks.
It's gonna be important for everybody to label their stuff, what do we wanna label them with? Wanna just tape a piece of paper and say, suit leaper's chair, suit leaper's desk.
Or they have some type of painter's tape, doesn't have a lot of high tech to it.
Like that blue.
Leave it a re, you know, like the blue, yeah.
Big sharp.
Big table.
Yeah, sharpies work.
Be careful they'll bleed through the painter's tape.
I just had a thought, what would that, it's in my brain, so you guys buying the painter's tape?
I do have a lot, sure, don't feel bad.
I'm not buying nothing.
Hey, so do we just order it?
Painter's tape.
Scott, what a negative, yes, order painter's tape.
I'm used to it. He's being honorary.
Terry, order painter's table on with the boxes.
We can run down to Ace Hardware, probably grab quite a few rolls.
Put them there.
Yeah, we'll hand them to you.
About the ARPA account. Any moving expenses.
Tell them your name is Terry.
We can probably, uh, we can, we can probably, um, just order it with the boxes, it would be easier to deliver.
Yeah, we can.
So.
Get them to us, we'll start packing.
As we, as we move through this, please, if you can think of anything, send Terry an, uh, well, Terry'll take the lead on this one, so she's gonna be the one left behind here, so. Uh, send Terry an email, but please C C everybody else, cause they may have the same question.
Hey, so everybody in the room? That'd be great.
Do you guys wanna have like, since we have on the doors that label your offices, departments or?
I think we can do that later too, I mean.
I, I kinda think that's something we can do after we get moved in.
I would maybe kinda wait because what happens if?
Move people around.
Move people around.
We're not gonna put your names on the wood departments.
But I would, yeah, I would think that some signage, Scott has a good idea with the, you know, something that could be set up on a pedestal or something that says building apartment and finding and zoning to, to lead people to the areas they need, but then also some over the.
Have you guys made the final decision that we will have some sort of security officer?
The security, um.
Putting together a security panel to talk about it.
And I wanted to be a part of that, is my next question, have, so have we set a date on a meeting or anything?
We are not involved with that, so ask Oki or.
Ask, yeah, isn't Gabby?
The Cat, Catlin, didn't you wanna be on that security team?
Oh, yeah.
I, I offered to, but isn't Brian Oki leading it?
Yeah, okay.
I think Oki's leading it and he's got his hands pretty full, so not certain where he's at, but.
I get it.
The sheriff was gonna have that conversation too, so maybe just, being the sheriff, we'll put her on here some.
Just making sure I hadn't missed.
The window's open.
Sorry?
The window's open down there.
Oh, I have no idea.
I don't know.
If they do, I think they might be.
I'm gonna go look.
I don't think they do.
Maybe not.
Find out, go down there and see.
There should be an escape.
I don't know.
So our badges, should, it's already set up for badges?
Well, that's part of the security.
It is, and Jeremy's already got that front door set up for the badges. But if you can't get in, the code is zero eight two eight.
Yeah, I got, I got that.
Good to know, I didn't know that.
Hmm?
Writing it down.
That'll be changing.
Yeah, this is a public meeting, we may not, we may not wanna keep that code.
Yeah, code doesn't work anymore.
We're gonna have to look at, um, are there, are there knocks boxes or nothing?
Careful what it say.
Have to look and get some knocks boxes.
All right, I think we are done, so think of anything else.
She just wrote it down.
All right, Kirsten, uh, if you want.